The meeting clause posted on the back wall.
In closing.
We decided we're gonna go without health care.
Good luck, but only for one.
Okay.
We're taking what we were gonna pay you and distributing it among employees.
I've never seen so many thumbs up at one time.
Didn't have the heart to tell them we weren't being paid this year.
Hello, Nebraska, the movie, take two.
Paulson says nothing and it's flash.
All right, we call the meeting door, we'll do the pledge of allegiance real quick.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I guess on the agenda, discussion in action on health insurance.
Well, I'll take the lead and then I'll let the employees listen in and you all got the email that individually for information. And what happened is we were misinformed by Judy, she said to come tonight, I told her, don't bother. Basically, the plan that we had, one of the individuals, I don't know if Jason out here or not, yeah, there's Jason. Jason did drop off the plan, the original one that you saw was silver, and Tyler Wells was not added on to that. And with the premiums, the way they are in age and everything else, it's actually a lower premium, believe it or not, on the gold plan. Everything still remains somewhat the same as far as metallic plans. There is a little bit better out of pocket, which was misrepresented last time, instead of nine thousand, it's now a four thousand, which is more in line, I think, with what we were talking about. And the other thing is the copays went from a thirty seventy to a twenty, eighty twenty, which is more standard with the, what I wanna call the industry and what people are usually eighty twenty. I asked Madison County Bank today and they, that's what they have, an eighty twenty. You know, the platinum is the ninety ten, that's the premium of all of the plans, but that's, unless you're out in the marketplace individually, that's a different beast all of its own, so.
So you're looking at the premier HSA gold?
Yes. And I really don't have a whole lot more to say than that, that kind of falls in the line, the HSA is still compatible, everything there still remains the same, it would be twenty-four hundred. And that would leave a sixteen hundred out of pocket versus that of almost six grand from the silver plan, which is a big difference. And I did talk to, the other thing that was misrepresented was the, on the HSA cards and how they work. Judy Bauer talked to a HSA banking system, banks that deal in HSAs only, and I called Midwest Bank. And the way it works is there, yes, the card will decline if the money's not in there, if you swipe the card, that is absolutely factual. The only thing that was not represented well on that was the fact that you've less said, you know, you, an employer can put the money in at any time. And it doesn't, there's no stipulation, and they've allowed their employees to do the same, you can put in any increments you want or however you want, so. And I think on the email, the suggestion I had was that, that you look at going like a, putting six months in and then six months in June or whatever, and then put the other six months to dwindle down to December. And I think.
Is your agent a representative?
Well, it's still Judy Bauer.
You don't think we should make a change?
I think you can, and I think maybe you should, but I think maybe when the broker time, when the time comes up for next year, as we do this, that it just, it's taking care of all at once. Cause right now, in the middle, I mean, you're not gonna change brokers, it would be starting from scratch all over again, so.
Why? Could it just be another broker doing this exact same plan?
I don't think it quite works that way, I mean, I would be a little, I mean, if I just went blind and blank to Madison County Bank or Sherwin, it'd be like starting from scratch. Cause we're already on the Blue Cross Blue Shield for January and there was some, you know, the way the overlay, the overlay.
Right, but she's not the only agent that represents that, I'm saying she came before this group and misrepresented basically everything that she said that night.
Yeah, and she actually admitted to it, too.
I don't know about you guys, but that's not somebody I want in charge of your guys'.
I'm not sure she deserves it.
Right, right, all the above.
I mean.
I mean, if I was an employee, I'd be petrified.
Cause I mean, how can you show this right now?
What's that?
This, this new you, or the gold or that?
This comes off the, this is the co-op site, this has nothing to do with Judy, this is me taking charge and kinda getting the information. The only thing I got from Judy, which comes from the, she's a broker, she's not the co-op.
Well, and that's my point, is there's a lot of other brokers that'll represent this plan.
Blue Cross Blue Shield has a handout, I obtained one from Bush and Grove, that has a very definite chart in it of all this stuff, didn't she give you one?
Sure, but Blue Cross Blue Shield was totally out of our range, even when we were at Blue Cross Blue Shield.
That's just why I'm doing, cause we have a chart here that says everything.
No, that's the, that's the extension of Blue Cross for that.
We're asking about.
All right, this is not you, Mike, this is not our.
No, I, I, actually, I, doing the research, this is by far from municipalities, the far superior plan to all the rest of them, cause I looked at the country.
Well, it's a much better plan than the solo.
Yeah, there's no doubt, and the metallics, you're stuck with that, Blue Cross Blue Shield was the first one you get. And the only thing that Blue Cross Blue Shield has different levels of, they join metallic plans right away and their chart has like one oh two, one oh three. And we actually have for the month of January, the equivalent of what we've always had with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the premiums were just, I thought, rather large, and Judy, Lori.
But.
I mean, we did it, but, you know.
All right, we're back to this and this power, I, I'm in agreement with you all in a grand least, that I don't wanna give her any money. I mean, it, you can't be fine if your agent says, hey, look, this is the plan we want, if you got it. And I understand your priorities, like you just want this to be over, cause as we're down to line as it is, I guess it probably pretty much.
We gotta have somebody that you guys can go and get a straight answer from, though. I think.
Right, but. The way it comes down to it, you probably won't call the actual broker anyway, you'll call directly the co-op opportunity, but it's just back to my thing. We all could've went, I mean, that's after I talked to some of the guys and I talked to Mike about the nine thousand dollar out of pocket thing, I mean, that was black and white, soon as I went online, looked at it, it said, right on. So, I mean, that's something she should've picked up on, just as my thought.
Yeah, really, a hundred percent after?
Yes, a hundred percent is covered for.
If you don't know, say you don't know.
Yeah.
Or at least do your research, maybe. Well, okay, well, let's get to the gold part of the plan, are you comfortable with the gold, everyone understands it?
Well, we had a meeting this morning with the staff and we might have a little difference of opinion, that's why the employees are here, they may wanna speak to you about all sorts of things. They do, we sent, handed out the sheets this morning and went through it the best I could, I had individual meetings with some of them, including, I think, my last one with Tyler. So, yeah, they may still have questions, and I mean, I certainly would let you ask.
My fear is going to the doctor and having that little card and you swipe it and it says decline, and then it's just like, oh, well, how much do I owe you then, you know? And it's just like, the plan is, sounds good and everything, it's just the, having that HSA, what, all it can be used for and like. Yeah, how much is gonna be put in at a time, cause like, I know, I have to take Colson to the doctor here and he'll be two in a month, and I have to take him, that two hundred that you guys were sticking in is gonna be gone, like that, cause they charge three, four hundred dollars to see. That's with, if, the old stuff with the copay, all I had to pay was, you know, twenty, twenty-five.
I think the only way to make the HSA work, since you can't borrow against it, basically in arrears like that, I think we'd have to almost make an advance payment or deposit, either quarterly, semi-annually, or something. Cause I mean, yeah, something happened to anybody tomorrow, you gotta pay for all the side of pocket.
The front end gets hurt.
And I'm fine with that, but let's say hypothetically, Joe Schmo works for us, gets his quarterly payment in June, which covers four months, and he quits on February first, walks away with all that money, what would you do about that?
The, the only way to do something internal in-house, as far as the HSA itself, it's out, the money's out. But on the other hand, the federal government, there are penalties for, on that HSA, if you bolt the course. As far as getting the money back, no, you wouldn't.
You can't like garnish as a final paycheck thing like that.
I think you'd have to do that in-house and just have a, you know, say.
Right, you'd have to have a baseline, something beforehand, but they.
Like a flex pan, pay forward, pay in the end, so. That's why I think the suggestion I have would pull in at least like twelve hundred into the six months, and then go to June and then put the other, because then you whittle down to the end of the year, at least you've got some security there all the way around in twelve hundred.
And just then have an agreement with the employees and fund it for the year, so they don't get caught.
I'm okay with that, too, that's, that's.
Cause I mean, if, if there's people out here that you don't plan on keeping a year, let's have a separate meeting.
It's, it's a good point, and thank you for bringing it up, I mean, I have no problem, you can put.
It's all gonna end up there eventually anyways, like, my thought is if we can swing it, it makes sense to fully fund it. But like Joe says, there's gotta be some sort of agreement on the table or something ahead of time when that deposit's made, and I don't, I mean, is that sound kosher to you?
Give me a couple hundred hours to study it and I can get you a definitive answer.
That would be no.
So by Monday?
Like seven thousand pages of Obamacare law you wanted to go through and.
Five pages is not worth reading.
No, we're just asking if, if we prepaid for the, the employee, if they leave before that year, that that portion would be.
My best guess would be that there's probably something in there that says whatever's in there is theirs, and you can't penalize them and take their left arm back, but I don't know.
And that's the point I was making from the federal, from the HSA side, that is true, you're going, there's the one thing to go on is basically what you said, if you wanna sign an agreement with them, it's between this municipality and the.
And that's what I'm asking them to do.
Could they not anticipating some substantial bill, could they not get an estimate to turn in a claim a week before they go to the doctor?
This was, this was actually brought up, it's less convenient, that's all.
Well, I'm not comfortable with a whole year, just, like, going a whole year is saying an awful lot, I don't see how we can, how much is a whole year, help me out with the number?
Twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred.
Time to rate employees, which ends up in the figure of even.
Well, that's, that's not my issue, I'm, I'm back to, if Joe Schmo is gone, his next paycheck's a thousand bucks, we're out fourteen hundred bucks right there. You know what I'm saying, that's my concern. Now, I understand that bills are serious and things like that, I, so I would be comfortable, basically quarterly, that would be an applicable amount, but that's just me, though.
I'd leave it in your hands, I mean, my suggestion was the twelve and you wanna go quarterly, monthly appears like it'll probably be less likely to work.
Or if anybody goes to the doctor, it's probably over two.
You're off.
Right.
One, one pharmaceutical visit.
Yeah.
Can we say we'll do it for six months and then review it at six months and see what everyone has left in there? Been used.
Can we change like that?
And then maybe, and then maybe go monthly after that, if, if everybody has enough money in there and feel comfortable with it.
Um, yes and no, it would be privacy more than anything, because the HSA, once it's set up, belongs to the employee exclusively, we have nothing to do with it, we'll set up the account and put money into it. But as what they do with it, it'll be between them and Uncle Sam and the taxes and the medical reformat.
Six months down the road, you're only looking at a balance of twelve hundred dollars left on the grid.
That's if they haven't touched it.
Okay, okay, so we're just, that's, I could lean towards six months, but then we get an employee in March, do we give them twelve hundred dollars off the bat, or does he have to wait till June or she?
No, they're, they're, usually if you do gain an employee, then at least what you should do is probably prorated and go with it based upon the number of months.
There's usually a waiting period before.
Yeah, but if you're like a ninety day probation.
So you'd be using the probation as maybe the same way as prorated and then putting it in. Staff-wise, we, we have a conversation this morning, there's another issue I'll bring up to you in that, but now would be the time, as far as the individuals that are getting it, is, is that a workable plan? Twelve or six months put in and be able to pay for the doctors and, and see how it works through June and then put the other twelve hundred in?
And what if we happen to go over the twelve between now and then? I mean, Steph's pregnant, she's due in July, this is my big concern here, a lot of doctor visits from now until then. So, I mean, I get six months would work in this case, because then the other twelve hundred would be there for when she actually gives birth. That would be, you know, cause I mean, my deductible might be simple this year, I mean.
Yeah.
But what happens if we run out?
I would think that the, the course that I think actually Bruce alluded to was at that point, if you choose to go to six in months and put it in, and if he runs out early, come to the administration or you at the same time, and say, I need to, from the employer, borrow against what I've got left to meet the year.
I would say so, for the fact, I mean, I, my opinion is probably yes, for the fact that if something catastrophic happens to anybody, I mean, you never know what's gonna happen.
What?
Your deductible's gone tomorrow, you know, that, you've gotta match that, so. For trying, trying to come up with that additional, you know, we're on the button, if you got twelve hundred into it, but there's a four thousand dollar deductible sitting there, you got twelve hundred dollars to put in debt and that, you gotta come up with that money now, so. I don't know, everybody else's thoughts.
Well, that's, I guess, why don't we just do it quarterly then? You know what I'm saying, if they got, if they got the bill that goes over twenty-four hundred, November, I'm not gonna know, being, you know.
What, what do you mean, it goes over twenty-four hundred?
Well, whatever the.
Still, they're, they're out of pocket, it's only gonna be sixteen hundred, cause they get a four thousand dollar out of pocket.
Right, well, I'm just saying, if we're willing to loan them or whatever, borrow against, we give them, what's wrong with going quarterly?
Cause you don't get enough of a security blanket there initially.
But they're borrowing against that, if they.
Well, then you're gonna have everybody come back and borrow, why not just fund it for six months?
And let the individual case, like.
Do not per case basis.
That's.
Or catastrophic, I mean, I, I don't know, it could be, it could be tomorrow, it could be anything, but.
That's different, though.
You're supposed to keep the shovel on.
Well, I'm fine with sixty-six months.
If, if you go to the doctor and you have a three hundred dollar bill and you only have two hundred in your HSA, are they just gonna bill you for the other hundred?
That's what I'm guessing.
Yes, they will, Judy, yes.
So, and you can bring that to them, it's not, it's not like you're not gonna treat them like you're nothing.
And that was, that was the point that was brought up, what happens, it's like, it's like anything else, a doctor will take the amount, whatever you pay, and then they're gonna bill you, you're gonna have a bill, and if you pay it, no matter how you pay it, it's.
I think every six months would be mine, I mean.
No, I'm fine with that, if people are comfortable with that, then I'm comfortable with it.
I'll make a motion that we go to the co-op goal, fund the HSA for six months at a time, and go through someone other than Judy Bauer.
Well, he's got, what, you know, how many things that can it take for, what if you are not?
I don't know, this week.
I'm pretty sure we can make an hour's worth of calls in the mornings, asking agents if they want a, yeah, right, a quick bonus check.
If not, if, if some reason it's not working out, bring it back Tuesday.
Yeah, we have till the fifteenth.
Okay, you, we can swing that, bring it back till Tuesday, if it doesn't work out.
So.
If we have to, Judy, it's Tuesday.
The other part of the equation or the question that was brought up, that there's a lot of people now affected by is going on with their spouse's insurance and how you wanted to treat that. I gave you a suggestion in the email to, based upon the numbers, the real numbers that are there and, you know, what we have to work with in the budget, that, that is taxable income. So if you give them two hundred like you would in HSA, maybe in Bruce's case, if he has a spouse, he can put it into his HSA.
I thought we were gonna put the two hundred in an HSA, that was.
You cannot if they're not on the HSA eligible plan, so those employers.
They can't have their own HSA? Ooh, I beg to differ.
No, they cannot have an HSA unless they are on an HSA eligible insurance plan.
Bruce can have an HSA that's not part of this and still have part of his income, up to whatever limit there is put in that HSA.
His spouse is on the HSA eligible plan, he's fine in that case.
But any, anybody out here can be eligible for that.
No.
Well, they have to have an HSA. Right.
Right.
And our spouses don't have that. If you have a four.
No, but they can still go get an individual HSA plan if they choose to, if they wanna go on the open marketplace and get an HSA plan, they absolutely can.
But what they're saying is they already on their spouse's plan.
You just don't, they're not.
No.
No, no, no.
They're not, they're not, they're on a regular plan, not a, not an HSA.
They're just on a group plan.
Okay.
And so that being said, that is a, that's a significance, quite a significance in how you wanna treat that. You know, my suggestion is, cause I really don't know, I mean, this is a, this is brand new territory. Common practice throughout the industry right now is to give an amount to the employee, because it does help us in the long run with the premiums and, and keeping the plan and the, with the prices down. So you don't wanna just exclude, and some of them, like, I'll use Jason for example, he went off onto the market because his boy has diabetes and is constantly gonna be in need, and this plan probably doesn't fit him as well. It was a choice, but on the other hand, he's still paying three hundred dollars with his wife in the open marketplace, so to compensate or to offset, you know, some of that, how you want to do that, cause it was a significant step, significant difference with Jason going off and Tyler being the one on. I suggested that the two hundred with the taxable is less than two hundred, they use, at least go two fifty, which brought it up to a fifteen thousand dollar, I believe in the mail, extra cost.
Right, fifteen.
Two hundred would be like twelve thousand. So, I mean, it doesn't dent, and we still have, have met our voluntary requirements in keeping it in line. I don't know, and I'll tell you, there's four or five employees out here that may not agree with that, I'm simply in a rock and a hard place and just making a suggestion, but I'd be willing to listen to anyone out there that's.
Two fifty's about, from the numbers I've seen, two fifty's about half of an individual employee premium.
This morning, I thought the fair way to look at it is what is a single premium on March?
Go from twelve to fifteen, six, just do math. Six times fifty would be three hundred, times twelve would be twenty-six, that's two thousand, just try.
Whatever you could do to help.
Well, with my motion, I'll add the two fifty in there.
Did you, I mean, did any employees, did you wanna have anything to say, did you want to speak up, because I'm, I'm giving you the opportunity to speak to the counselor. Are you comfortable, Jerry?
Never.
At least you're consistent.
So are we gonna get, like we did before, or not?
You got, you had taxable income, right?
It was half of the premium last time is what we got, so if your premium was eight hundred dollars, you got four hundred dollars, which was subject to tax.
It was half. And now we're gonna get two fifty? Right, now it's just half the single.
That's the motion on table, two fifty.
So if you were to take the other insurance, you would get the two hundred plus your premium paid, this, you're getting the two fifty.
Tax.
Taxable.
It has to be taxable, Jerry, I can't, I, I looked and there's no way around it.
Anytime you get a check or anything like that, throw it tax, cause it's a great thing to have.
Unless it's deposited into an HSA.
Exactly.
Right.
So if your spouse has an HSA, you can put that in.
Tax free.
Tax free.
Okay.
So actually, I'm taking a pay cut for not taking your insurance, right?
No.
You're gonna get less, yes, from what you have, from what you have been getting.
Who said no?
I did, cause it's, it's, it's not a pay cut.
It's a benefit.
The benefits have changed, the benefit package has changed.
Yeah.
So the benefit package is changing, that's all, your actual income, what, what you get paid by the city, that doesn't change, the benefit package changes, there's a difference.
I'm gonna get that, cause I'll take home one, right?
Your check will be less.
You're right, that's the bottom line, right?
You understand what the difference, you understand the difference between.
So that's a pay cut, right? Is that a pay cut or not?
You wanna raise your voice more, or do you understand the difference?
That is a pay cut.
No, it's not a pay cut.
It's a cut in the benefits.
There's a difference.
Well, does anybody have any objection to the, the two hundred and fifty dollar amount, I guess that's less than you used to do, is that what?
Yeah, well, it is, and for someone, if you, I, I pick on Jerry and I don't mean to, I mean, because, I mean, Jerry shouldn't be with a family plan with increasing the premiums.
But nobody ever paid anybody half a family premium not to take the insurance, that was a mistake done previously, and just because it was a mistake done previously, doesn't mean it should continue into perpetuity.
I don't know, let me be.
Well, you keep saying what the norm is, there is no norm of anybody.
But let me be tactful in saying this, I don't know if at the time, it was a mistake, because it was a reactive measure to try to make things work for the insurance.
No, I'm just saying, no, you like to say it's the norm.
The norm is right now, all over the place, between probably an hourly wage, two hundred to, I, three fifty I hear is what Amelia's paying, and so there's, it's in that range.
Right, I mean, probably doesn't matter what the norm is, because we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, if there's no further discussion, is there a second on the motion? Does anybody remember what the motion was?
Gold plan.
Yeah.
Plan plus the two fifty, plus not vote with Judy Bauer.
Six months at a time for the HSA and a new agent and add two hundred fifty for individuals that don't take insurance, is what his motion was.
And that's six month funding.
And, and further clarification, just to make this, we can move on, Bruce, he almost did not reveal in the choice of two hundred dollars into a health savings account, or if you wish to have two fifty as income, in, in taxable income, it should be his choice.
That's on the motion.
Why should, yeah, why should it be different, I mean, if anybody else's got a spouse that's got an HSA and they can put it in, why not let them?
Should be anybody.
Right.
Or still, we're waiting for a second or further discussion?
I guess I'm not sure what. I agree with you, Chad, I really do, your, your check's gonna be smaller.
Maybe.
But, I mean, but on the other hand, it's one of those things, you know, I'm not sure, what, the reason I came up, what I was running the numbers on is two fifty is, do you see how, basically, two fifty's half of like a single employee, say, like Nancy, let's say. Hers is basically five hundred dollars a month is what her insurance is costing, we're covering basically half of her premium, that's how, that's how I came up with the two fifty. I'm like out there, and I don't know if that's right or wrong or different, but basically, I'd be paying for half of your premium to go on your wife's insurance or something like that, is what's meant for. When it's all said and done, you're using that to make part of car payment or part of house payment or whatever, I mean, it's, right now, it's part of your check, you live on that. It wasn't originally, however many years ago, designed to be like that, it was designed to go help pay for your insurance, that you were having to pay part of a premium on your wife's, but as insurance has actually gotten a little better and stuff over the years, the payment might as well come down, so it's just covered, and then that amount could became part of a paycheck, you know, used, so. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the other option is at this point, cause I mean, I guess on the, the budget side of things, I can't see paying the amounts that we were paying out. I mean, I guess on the- the budget side of things, I can't see paying the amounts that we were paying out. Right or wrong or different, I mean, it's a hell of a shot, you know.
I'd like to ask you, and you don't have to, you don't have to tell me, it's your business, not mine, I guess, but I, are you, is your wife paying more than twice the two fifty for a monthly insurance?
I don't know.
Ever work? You don't know? I don't know either what people in- in large groups pay anymore, and I don't know if that's applicable. Um, certainly, it's certainly to our advantage to have them go with their spot with you, to go with your spot. Do you know how much you pay?
Honestly, if you went up this year, if Bruce Jason, they're paying more.
They're paying more, that's correct, yes.
Yeah.
It is, I mean, it's.
And I know my spouse pays ninety-six dollars a week, that's for her one shot.
It helps us on our budget to be able to do that, but eventually, we're gonna end up in problems because of it. And I can say it, 'cause we did the same thing in the office there, and we actually dropped under that number. I asked her that night about the percentage of employees on the adoption, that are adopting it. If, I'm guessing after Jason left, if we was one more person, probably, we're not eligible in group policy anymore. That's one of the biggest things, 'cause, I guess, we ran into that because we had a lot of employees that were opting out and taking the check. And after a while, it got to be, basically, we're paying them not to take our insurance, and it made it, the guys that needed the group policy, prime example, me, um, it got to be the point that, you know, I'm, because of Camden situation, I'm not insurable if I'm not on a group policy.
How much did they pay for any? Were they paid on the individuals?
Half, half.
Half, I mean, how did you, and then, was it an HSA plan?
No.
Okay.
Right. No, it's through the check.
And I, you know, some of us talked about it too, and one of the things, and obviously, this is something to consider, but they, we were talking about, if they looked at just an individual and they paid half, paid us half of that premium, like you said, and then also gave us what everybody else is getting for their HSA plan. Would that be something to consider?
As long as it goes toward an HSA, I don't see, I don't see paying the half of, half of the premium plus another two hundred dollars that doesn't go to anything, that's basically just a bonus pay. It's basically, and I would just, honestly, if we're looking at it as a monthly, monthly income, I would like to see it more on the salary side of things than as a hidden, tuck it away in the benefits.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just, if you're making X amount of dollars per month, and it's, everybody knows it's considered part of your pay, it's not a benefit, well, then maybe it should just be a raise of pay, you know, I think.
And more employees you get on the plan, the better.
It is.
The better costs are gonna be.
I don't know if that makes sense, what I'm saying, but.
Well, absolutely. The binding power of fifty's better than the binding power of ten.
But I don't think the binding power of nine is any less than the binding power of ten.
No, but we're almost at the point where we won't be eligible.
I know, I- I don't think.
I guess the biggest thing on my side is, you, in the long run, you don't wanna make it too enticing to get off the city's insurance, because it's gonna hurt the rest of you guys that are on. I mean, that's, it's- it's the city's benefit, it's not just the benefit of- benefit of being an employee, you get a paycheck if I don't take it. It is, I mean, it truly is, but in our reality, the main purpose you're getting that money is to pay for your insurance. Joel's right when he says that, it's a paycheck hit.
How is it the insurance benefit? If you're paying two hundred and fifty dollars to be in the world, not on your insurance, and so instead now, if they go on insurance through the city, city's paying more.
'Cause your overall premiums are gonna come down, though, like, and Joel's right.
I- I can understand that if you have fifty employees.
Mm-hmm.
It's nine of a fact, it's nine of a fact.
Twelve, nine.
Yeah, one or two isn't even.
That actually, it will make a difference. It absolutely will make a difference, whether we had seven or we had twelve made a difference.
How much?
No, it was three years ago, but it was about twenty-five, thirty percent.
Well, any other discussion?
Do you have any idea how much less this will, the most, the most difference it will make in one person's gross salary?
It would be worth a review, if that's what you're, and I think I know where you're coming from, I mean, I can certainly take a look at that, because, you know, there are individuals, it made a significant difference, I mean, on that.
You mean like what they're taking from now?
No, I'm saying how much we added because of the insurance, previous, plus the highest paid, that someone got paid for not taking the insurance.
Probably the family, sixty-two hundred. Is what they were compen-
Are you at five hundred dollars a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're gonna go, they're gonna get about two fifty this time, this year.
Actually, a family would have been a little bit more than that. It's a little over six hundred, five, six forty a month.
With the, uh, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we were looking at, um, an individual family plan giving eight hundred as extra compensation.
So we, so employees that weren't taking it, somebody was getting a check for eight hundred dollars a month for not taking the insurance?
Almost ten, or anything.
No, 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 no.
Would be.
Would be, not maybe they are.
With the new.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, six twenty.
Six twenty.
Two hundred.
Yeah.
Which has kind of put us in the crisis point, so you understand where we're at.
Yeah, and then of course, a third of that's subject to taxes, so.
Yeah, that's like ballpark, three hundred and fifty dollar bump, or shot in the paycheck basically.
I would, I would consider gradually lowering the amount, maybe starting out this year at a little higher, and saying, next year, we're only gonna allow so much for employees.
Yeah, it's, there's.
I know it's very hard to, much of stuff, if you can take a pop like that, and I don't know how to. But I think we need, I think we need to cut it, because I think that that's one of the things that's been growing so much over the years that I've been on here, is what we've had to pay for insurance, and every time the insurance goes up, we pay more for people not to take the insurance, and it's getting really out of hand.
Biggest predicament, honestly, is the fact that, that I see is, I've never seen any other company out there, I mean, I've just been in meetings, that's where I've been on this stuff. Any company that pays employee based upon the family premium, not on the individual employee, you know, to, companies do this all the time, based upon, if you don't take the insurance, but it's based upon, you're the employee, you don't want it, here's half your premium, or full premium, whatever it be per month, but to base it upon some of these upwards of six hundred dollars a month, because you didn't take the family plan, well, I'm not sure that that makes a lot of sense either, so.
And that's all I was trying to get across earlier.
Yes, it's not the fact that I'm against you guys. You are helping and hurting over the same time that we're taking the city's insurance, because of the long run. You're- you're helping our bottom line, because it saves on the budget, save the money, but on the other hand, eventually, one of the coworkers is gonna get burned on the deal, you know, because even, I'll drop your name, Jason, I mean, it's one of those things, you guys are probably in the same boat, that you're- you're gonna have to help the time get insurance on your own if you're not with the group policy or.
Without a group policy, we wouldn't bill the insurance.
Yeah, so, it's.
And that's why we weren't sure what was gonna happen here, and my wife, we waited till the last day, and we finally jumped on hers, 'cause we had no idea what was gonna happen here.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, I'm not doing it trying to pinch your panties or anything like that, but, like I said, you don't wanna hang that carrot out there too much, because if you make it too good, everybody's jumping off the insurance, and that's the purpose of having a- a group policy, for your employees to get a little protection with that, so. You know, that makes sense where I'm coming from or not, but.
What's house grad got out there, Jason?
If I don't take the insurance, I get an extra seventy-five dollars a paycheck taxed, so.
Get in fifty a month?
Yeah, so when you're getting two fifty, I don't have a whole lot of sympathy, I apologize, or more, but we're not really scoring with higher benefits.
So you're getting higher deductible?
Yeah. Well, I'm not, I'm not on insurance, I'm with my wife, so.
Well, it's a legal plan.
So, which is, yeah, Laurie's always talked highly about the plan, I, my wife's through a teacher meeting, so important.
Let's talk about this plan, this plan is pretty nice, I mean, I've been looking through it myself, and it's pretty sweet. Got a fairly high deductible, but for the city to match, or, you know, go up to twenty-four hundred, helps that a lot, but I mean, I know it doesn't.
The out-of-pocket max is about half, or it's a half?
And this is.
Discussion's over, yeah, it's second, all right, but if someone, if discussion's over, so.
I got a question, um, does the city council have to look at insurance every year?
Oh, but we're going to.
See if it's a new policy or new deal, or if they'd like get a policy for like two or three years, keep it that way?
Used to be able to, but until Obamacare, Obamacare came around. I picture this is gonna be a yearly occurrence every year, because they're gonna.
Well, it- it had been, when I was on city insurance, every year you had to refill out all your medical trial, all your medical bills, every year.
It's based off a calendar year, they'll go up on you every year, you have to revisit it every year. You can't log in, you cannot log in for two or three years.
There's competition on what insurance company wants to prepare.
Yeah, you're forced to.
Start this all over and get next.
Well, and they'll break the group too, Jerry, depending on how many claims the group has or hasn't filed in the past year, that will affect your premiums the next year too.
Yeah, the only reason we didn't feel the, uh, the pressure we did now is because the last couple of years, we were very fortunate, that we had zero percent and point five, or point one, point two, point percent.
Yeah, the one year was three, two or two percent, because we had, knock on wood, we didn't have anything catastrophic happen, so we were very lucky, healthy group.
You said it was, it's the premier HSA gold, so it is.
Yeah.
And what was the deductibles?
I had fifteen and three, and then out-of-pocket was four, so there was a five entire differential. Once you meet your four, um, then it's, the cohorts were in between the three and the four.
So maximum exposure would be sixteen hundred bucks or something?
Mm-hmm, for a family.
Really, yeah, on a family plan, so. Just.
Which is pretty nice.
Trying to get them lined up together, side by side, it doesn't look that way too easily.
And I don't know why there's such a huge jump between the silver and the gold, but there just is, and I mean, I accept, I apologize, there's a huge jumping, and actually, the.
Because they're pushing, because they're pushing, trying to get them to take premium insurance.
Probably. But if the numbers I submitted to you, based upon the numbers we had, it was a seventy-eight hundred dollar a month premium, and now it's down to sixty-seven, and that's all part of that fluctuation of age and range and everything else.
As a, I've- I've had an HSA for, I did for five or six years until the premiums got, so I hadn't, couldn't handle it, but would you allow employees to put their own pre-tax dollars into it as an added benefit if they wanted to?
It's mandatory.
What's mandatory?
You, not that they have to put in, but it's mandatory that you have to allow.
Yeah, so they can.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Tyler, I just talked about that, and we can, we can match up to the, and take it out pre-tax.
Which I might do. She has no income tax to pay for glasses, it's pretty good.
Especially, especially the carries from year to year.
Yeah, no, it's.
Are we for sure that carries over year to year?
Yeah.
Sure, last, last month we were, yeah.
Through, uh, through Faith Regional, they have an HSA, but theirs doesn't carry over year to year.
It's not an HSA, then, Tyler, ask for it.
An HSA, it's your money.
Well, they, that's the real first.
That's the HR.
Yeah.
Wonder what, I usually slip this, take that off, just slip it to Christine tomorrow or something, but.
So your positive carries over?
Yes, that, that I don't need you for that, you know, the six, that HSA.
But once I have it, you're gonna be working, that's already improving you, so.
And what, what are the deductibles, sir?
The premiums, what is the premiums, eh?
Uh, I, I need the two.
Is it individual or is it?
It's monthly.
The employees, we've got very interesting.
For this goal, yeah, monthly.
Sixty-seven, seventy. Sixty-seven, forty-four, six thousand.
Right, country, uh, Cheryl, who else?
A year.
Six thousand, sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Runner's duty.
For the group, but I meant, the individual price is separate, like, mine would be not, it would be different than somebody else's.
It's based on age, if you work down there.
'Cause all they can ask you now, yeah, all they can ask you now is your birthday.
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know, who can you do with that, just then, as far as health insurance, is that who you go through? That's what you're gonna do.
I've, even. I'm sorry.
Been seconded, yes, it has been seconded.
You're on, comfortable with that?
Looking for a new person, if we can't find anyone, we'll talk about it to everything, and the two fifty, six months payment is starting in February first, and we'll probably have to tweak that next year to make it January, actually, they're making, they're getting more.
The only ben- the only benefit we got out of this whole thing is in the month of January, by the rollover of Blue Cross Blue Shield with an agreement with co-opportunity, is that anybody that goes to the doctor in January, that money goes toward the deductible in co-opportunity as well, they don't lose anything they do in January.
That's good, okay.
So, so we're going to have to pay the HSA amount for January, even though we didn't have an HSA, I mean.
No, I'm, we're doing.
We're going to, we're gonna consider that for six months.
Yeah, we're gonna give them six hundred bucks on the first, on their HSA rate.
First February.
All right.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve.
Twelve, February one, yeah.
I'm sorry.
July first.
Okay, that's fine.
Excuse me, be six, five and six.
Aye.
Aye, Joe?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, I guess we've got a rule on that.
Now, it's time to go to work, again.
Well, she has shoved that in front of, I'm telling this is what we want. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just stay in there with that one. I didn't say that.
Which is a normal commission.
I have no idea how to, which, what they're.
I wish you could do it without a broker, and then just take the money and split it amongst the employees.
No.
I'm sure there'd be no complaint.
Hold on, how much is that?
L B eight.
Well, if you're finding brokers, you have to be doing that, I assume.
Yeah, I don't.
Charity. I think that's not how.
All right, discussion action on L B eight forty.
I'm gonna actually make this a little bit simpler, because we're gonna, you're gonna ask a question, I know it's gonna come out, it's hard to do anything, but I want you to take, this is my endeavor to actually put together what is called a, a one of a.
Need to, I can do that.
Plan, you're not gonna be able to make a lot of it, but I'm certainly, I think we can talk about it, it reveals one of the things, and Bruce, and I mean, you're just seeing it for the first time, but there are many aspects of the L B eight forty, you know, your city term, you're involved with, the main thing, oh, I'm sorry.
So this is different than the one we got?
That, that is just kind of a, that's Roger penciling in, um, some different things. This, in order to pass.
Disregard all my remarks, and that's what you do.
In order to pass, the things I want you to just take a look at, I'll just go through very quickly, and then I'd like you to just take and look at it and review, compare it with what the strategic plan, or Roger wrote down, that might be individually, um, really strong with plain view, that could be written in. This is as comprehensive as I could find, and I worked with, actually, Beatrice, and, and sort of put this together, and it, it is basically a plan to present, this is how it would look, that you would present to the public, uh, and go through a public hearing, and have available, and it has to go, and there are, as you looked at the other sheets, certain things that were needed. So you look at the one, section one is, and you can read this later on, is your general community economic development strategy. That lays out exactly what Roger and Bruce did as far as what the legislative act, L B eight forty allows. Then you have to go into section two, and you have to describe the purpose of what you want, and they want it laid out in, um, in language that will understand. Section three are the type of economic activities that will be eligible for assistance. These are some of the things that you, uh, need to, uh, look at, and if you go to the next page, you'll see fifteen different areas, including, I know the one that, uh, is in there that Brooke will like, I'm sorry, Brooke, did you get one?
No.
I guess.
Yeah, I can get my money, you need help, come here.
Was it number five you were gonna talk about?
Uh, five is, five needs to be in there if we talk about what Bruce said and we wanna go through real estate options. This needs to be part of the L B eight forty plan. Actually, number fifteen is the one, the reduction of real estate property taxes. Um, it, it's designed to be in there because, and the ultimate goal, even if your plan, uh, has an expiration date or if it has a, a failure to thrive or whatever, the money would actually go back into the general fund to reduce, um, the overall tax and tax exposure for the cities. Uh, then you gotta get into the specifics, which is a little bit tougher to do, so I went with looking at reap programs for the Senate for Road Affairs and I also looked at.
Like, just real quick, one of the things they told us down in Lincoln was that L B eight forty, when it can never go to the general fund.
It, it cannot go to the general fund as it exists. When L B eight forty is in place, you cannot, you need to actually separate those funds, so you are correct.
Okay.
If it ever were to die and through the council and the, and you have no, there's no program, your program, and you have.
Oh, yeah, alright.
Some places have L B eight forty plans with an expiration date they actually put before the public, kind of the sunset clause. This will be in place for ten years to revisit.
So like if this ceased?
When the money goes into the general fund.
Fair enough.
Uh, qualifying of the businesses and you gotta be very specific on, uh, what you, uh, considering. This is a template. This goes straightforward and they all meet the, uh, the needs of the plan that you have to have in place. Qualifying business, obviously, location, you guys, these are where you want, I want you to make your chicken scratchings and marks to see. You have the right here, uh, a qualifying business does not have to be located within the zoning jurisdiction of Plainview. If the city council determines that there is a clear economic benefit, you can say right now, no. And I, I didn't wanna answer that because those are the kind of things I want you to look at. If you want it just for the zoning jurisdiction of Plainview only, period, then we need to say that.
How far does our zoning arms go?
One mile.
That's it?
Yep. One mile outside circle of, uh, Plainview.
I'd make the recommendation that we do it on a case-by-case basis and leave that ability to help outside that mile open if we so choose.
Well, this language then would probably be pretty close because a qualifying business does not have to be located. You're saying you, you can, but does not have to.
But that's. Refer it to be.
Well, you're saying you want it to be within that one mile.
No, he says, he wants us to have this choice.
We wanna be able to have that option.
Right.
Sure.
Cause like if somebody wanted to put something between here and the ethanol plant. We couldn't help them if it's exactly halfway.
Correct. Same way goes on the next one. Uh, that's the decision that you wanna make and, uh, as far as eligible qualifying businesses to receive any benefits more than once. I don't have a problem with it. This is standard language that you can help a business out more than once, but if you choose not to, we're not exactly.
Otherwise, we get side number.
What's that?
I said, I, I could just soon have it just be once, otherwise we get side number.
Okay.
Cause how many times did they get stuff from the community? At least three, you know, whether it be electrical, you know, rate reductions, whether it was the community group or the.
Cause that's where I would like you to take a look at, and really it's made out black and white.
Read it.
Cause I, I want you to absorb this.
I'm kinda waiting for Bruce to speak up. He's got anything he's noticed. Have you seen this before?
It's the first time. I've given it to everybody.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I need somebody to kind of educate me on this. I'm looking at the source of funding. I, I know the program, but I'm not overly, I guess I don't quite comprehend where some of the funds come from. Is this basically, we can basically induce another, put another tax out there?
No, it's already there.
We already have the funding. We have the.
And we've already voted on how to spend it.
It's that third sales tax we use on higher rods or funding, so we already have the funds.
Gotcha.
On the source of funding.
But this frees our usage.
And, and this was taken from Beatrice, Bruce, and I want you to just look at this. I don't want you to really comment on now because there's, these are so many things that can be looked at. But one of the things they talked about, and I, and I liked it, is that you don't want this program to, uh, for example, be in the amount of the excess of four tenths of one percent of the actual valuation. It kinda keeps the program in its place and that's what the figure they chose and that's.
Well, I don't think we can put a solid dollar amount in there either.
I, you, you can and you, I did only because it requires an amount to at least be in there, but we can actually change the dollars.
I would put like up to.
City is, city's only valued at like thirty-four million dollars and four tenths of a percent is only a hundred and twenty thousand.
Right.
And you're only getting thirty a year anyway, so you got four years before you could ever even loan the maximum.
Exactly.
Okay.
No, and that's exactly, it's pointed out.
Your phone must have a bigger calculator than mine, cause I don't have.
Just use it, just use it a lot.
If you look at why I put in the city of Plainview shall appropriate thirty-five thousand, that's the approximate figure, but we actually, I would like to be able to talk with Bruce on the legal language on saying the sales tax on a yearly basis.
Well, yeah, I just meant if there's a year that it's lesser, it's a year that it's more.
Sure.
Right.
It, it's just a number in here, just, I want him to look at it first.
If we can legally say up to thirty-five, I would be fine.
Or can we say one-third of the?
Well, it wouldn't be one-third.
Wait, it is one-third of the.
Well, we got one and a half appropriated sales tax.
Just one. The other half goes towards, um.
Twenty-four. Right, so wouldn't it be one and a half total? I mean, just, I'm saying.
No, it's one percent, that's one-third of one percent.
We have one point five percent sales tax paying things, correct?
Correct.
That's not part of L B eight forty though.
Right, so.
It's just a one percent on L B eight forty.
Half percent goes to the zoning pool. The other one percent is divided equally by the three.
I understand that.
Bruce, Bruce may need to take the language, and I, you are absolutely correct, because I don't want, I don't wanna sit there and divide. I want Bruce to take a look at the language and basically say the language that needs to be put in there with the one point five percent sales tax and that's what you're saying, so.
Well, I, yeah.
Um. Doesn't it say that you're gonna take all the, the city's local option sales tax, so all of that would go in, or one-third would go directly into the thing? But it says the city of Plainview shall appropriate thirty-five thousand dollars annually for the economic development. Is that in addition?
No.
See, but I think that's the way it reads.
But it, it, it shouldn't because what it's saying is you are appropriating, you are developing a program and basically where is this available funding come from? And they're saying the city shall appropriate thirty-five thousand dollars to the economic development program through.
Right.
You might wanna put it, you might wanna put it up to in case you don't get thirty thousand dollars yet.
Exactly.
Right.
That, I have no issues with that. Thirty-five is just a number I'm throwing in to show you what it's approximately.
It bumped up to forty? And just now, but.
This draft is copying some other town's plan, I thought you were saying.
I went through and looked at it. It was Beatrice's and I, and I, it's, it's, it's basically what was required by, uh, the legislature to have in the plan that basically laid out each.
Not the answers so much, but the questions.
Well, it says, for instance, that whole paragraph says it shall be funded from local revenue, including property taxes, the sales tax and any other general tax levy for the general fund.
Which.
Well, that's not what we're gonna do.
No.
No, which, why, why don't you look at it and edit it?
Which L B eight forty, by the language itself, allows that. Could allow property tax.
It's like an HSA, you can feed it yourself if you want to.
Mm-hmm.
So you could put all your sales tax in and then.
Well, you can only feed it through what, what this says and what the citizens vote to approve.
Which is what you need to see and what we want to present to the public to.
You're just gonna feed it, right, the little sales tax chunk.
And, and I, and I, and I believe that's our only goal. I, if I, if I understand this as a workshop, I don't think anyone here on the council to present, you weren't anticipating funding from the city to be anything but the one-third of the local option sales tax, or were you?
Not this year. But you, yeah, I mean, we certainly don't know. We have, if Roger suddenly, between Roger and Joe's efforts, wildly successful and we're like, we need to find more money into this or pay someone full-time, and I'm saying hypothetically, pie in the, pie in the sky, reach for the stars, believe in everything you can do, I think we should, like, consider, leave wiggle room.
If you're saying this is funded just by the sales tax, the economic development budget is completely separate. Roger's not paid out of this.
Okay, so we can.
If you're saying only this is the sales tax, cause the people didn't, I mean, they, you have to be a little cautious with that. I think, I thought this was in addition, which I was happy with, cause seventy's a lot better than thirty a year and you get some more stuff done.
There is, there is a provision, if we wanna go on, I'll kind of, uh, there is a provision about what's called non, um, appropriated funds.
Okay.
That would go through there. Um, then they wanna get down into, uh, the section six and that, they get into great details. And this is where I turned in, if you wanna do a revolving loan fund, which I know Bruce has had some experience with and I have too, but they want it laid out in very detailed, uh, format, exactly what that is, and that's a, that's a reap type, um, micro loan program.
Well, we need to put some parameters in there too, I believe, cause that first sentence, you do one project and give out your yearly worth of funds and we're done.
Oh, and I, but that'll be, that's kinda like at your discretion. If you wanna put parameters right into the language, the one thing I'm trying to do is, is set the guidelines, but be loose enough to understand that there's gonna be things that happen. A major project that you feel is important enough.
Yeah, exactly.
Might take half your funds and it may be well worth it. On the other hand, you don't wanna sit there and give it to everyone or you'll be, you'll be done.
Well, right, a thousand bucks here and a thousand bucks here and a thousand bucks here, and what's that really do? That's kind of keynote grade stuff.
Anyway, this, uh, continues to go on and then there's a huge part on the city administrative responsibilities and the responsibilities, or his or her designee, basically, you were looking at Roger. The whole thing is based upon a citizen oversight committee, which is required by law. And you'll also have final say, council always has the final say on an L B eight forty.
So if something happens, you get a loan or something or a request, that comes to the meeting, we will talk about it.
Yep.
Okay.
Correct. Um.
So this, designate, would that be like Roger?
Roger. And then designate, they would say if it's an auditing portion, it might be working with Lori to make sure she doesn't go insane with the L B eight forty. Um, it basically lays out, even you have to put the application process, how do you do it? You lay it out based upon your, uh, type of businesses, your businesses are with your corporation statuses and that's all just kind of, uh, language that's there. It's very good language. I went through every line and, uh, in, in my mind, they did a very good job. They were very detailed in making sure they kept everything in there that needed to be presented to the public. There are other, uh, L B eight forty plans that are kind of, um, I'm not sure how they ever got passed. Um, so you got all those different kinds in the verification process. This is pretty expensive and if you wanna do a micro loan program of any nature, of any good quality, you gotta have this extensive, uh, type of verification, their records and you go through the whole process. Section eight, you look at, um, once again, your qualifying people and then adjustments, then it talks about, these are all requirements. The one thing I wanted you to look at, and I'm gonna probably, and Bruce, I'm gonna be looking at this, Roger and I talked about this, but section eight, even though it's allowed with the L B eight forty and a lot of towns have it, we did not wanna go into the housing rehab.
I was just gonna say, we should, I'd make the recommendation, we take that out because we're basically doing that with the C V D G grants.
Right, and I, and I don't, you know, I mean, I basically, when you're looking at that, uh, Bruce, is, yeah, that's something we just throw out. You and I talked about the fact that we wanna make L B eight forty explicit enough to explain everything out there, but on the other hand, you, we talked about it.
Eleven eight, Jason.
Open-ended.
Eleven eight.
The whole section?
Yeah.
Oh.
Again, that's what you, just for the.
Yeah, it'd be section eight.
Yeah.
It'd be, because that, but anyway, we talked about being open-ended and that up where you sat there and had, uh, the flexibility within the law.
For that term. I say, otherwise you're gonna let people double that.
Well, I would say leave it, Mary, Eric has come for us. We have to.
We're not always gonna be here though, and I don't trust people to always not give family reimbursement.
I mean, you, you've got it awfully complex. The draft is awfully complex.
It is.
If you consider realistically, who is gonna look over a limited liability company's business plan, two years' tax returns, profit and loss, balance sheet, articles of organization, bylaws and that's, who's gonna do that every time?
That could be your committee.
All this loan stuff, you're talking a large administration operation there to do all that stuff.
Well, and that gets me to part of the pay here too. Anyway, we'll go out and talk about that second. Um, it's interesting that Bruce said that because one of the things about having the L B eight forty plan is complex. One of the citizen oversight and the review board is, is adamant about in the, uh, language of the law is that you have at least people that are associated with, you, you need to have like bankers and.
CPAs, okay.
CPAs, and these are the kind, you're not looking for a volunteer board that you would oversee because of being a citizen, like the tree board or something like that. This, this oversight board is, um, fairly strong.
Either that or shorten up, or you're gonna have to do the board anyway, and there are requirements for people to be on the board. And you're gonna have a hard time filling that board, always. But I still would question, how complex do you want to make the plan? You can solve some of the problems by shortening up the alternatives. Well, think about that as you look at these things. Does that provision work that L B eight forty, take that on and do it? Or is it just tampered with?
Superfluous. And, and Bruce is right, you, I, I wanted to, you have the, what I consider the best plan out there, the most complex, to take it and fit it more, but this is the requirements you need to have right through straight, not through twelve, I believe it's fourteen, I think it's the last one. Um, if you look at now on the section ten, that, that's where you have the administration system. And that is where one of the, the, the big parts of getting this board together. Uh, program review, you look at section eleven, you've got the citizens advisory board and how they report to the city council. Findings and suggestions of their public hearing call for that purpose at least once every six months from an effective date. And the one thing that I, that I didn't, it's earlier on, I want you to keep in mind on L B eight forty is it is not, and just like the sales tax itself is reviewable every two years, you can put an L B eight forty into place for the number of years you designate. It is not open-ended for the rest of life. Um, the Beatrice, for example, I use them and they, they're not indicative of all the programs, but they use ten years. And you wanna use a ten-year and then do a review or something like that, it's accountability, once it goes back to letting the people, it's not there forever. If it isn't working, it isn't working. Um, the part that I really wanted, the monitoring, this is the part that, and there's no surprise, this is actually language that I see in a lot of them. But you have to realize that, um, with the L B eight forty, the city attorney is, is, is involved with a lot of these, any relevant changes. Anything that happens to L B eight forty in the legislature, anything that, you know, conducting reviews, uh, laws and regulations, so we would be utilizing the services of Bruce there. And I don't wanna surprise him, so I just wanna make sure you're.
Yeah, with L B eight forty, it allows us to use those funds to pay for those bills.
It does. It does.
I'm not so sure that thirty-five thousand's gonna.
Uh, the other part, section twelve.
Did you need a run? Can I start working for you?
Honestly, it's nice.
Section twelve is where you were talking about in purchase of real estate and the option, which had come into our language a little bit. This lays it out a little bit more, but, uh, part of the requirements, this tells you right here through one through four, uh, site selection, property zone. It has some of those conformity issues, uh, city and county, we have a city comprehensive plan that has to follow. The, the language is here to set that up and, and, and get it to kind of what we want it to do. Section thirteen is investment of the development fund. The thing you need to know about that more than anything else is what can be, uh, invested into it. And there can be other non-statutory investments that can be put in there from any program. Now, the language I left in there, but I thought you find this humorous at the least, uh, beneficial at the best. A three percent administrative fee should be retained by the city for program administration.
It does not say city administrator, it says by city.
Oh, I missed that part.
Yeah, you missed a word.
But anyway, you administration of that, it's, it's allowed in there and I think it should.
Or it needs to be.
Uh, city shall not transfer or remove funds. Here's where you talked about it from the economic development fund, other than the purposes prescribed in the acting program. Put this around in general and you've already committed a fraud. In the event the economic development program is terminated, any funds remaining will be transferred as provided by statute to the general fund of the city and will be used as an installment basis to reduce the property tax levy of the city as provided by the act. Right to amend the plan, that's simply, the last part of it says that everything you read is oligarchage, and you have the right to amend it at any time.
It may be amended by the voters.
They have the right to see the vote. That is a full, when they talk about, what does a comprehensive plan look like that is actually filed? This is a full, fairly complex plan.
Is this the hearing part, or is there an hearing part later?
Not tonight, I don't think the hearing is tonight at all. I hope not, we have the public.
Have suggestions.
They're welcome to be here.
Well, I was, I mean, I just looked through it too real quick. I've actually done one of these twice now, three times in three different counties, and under that section four B, the qualifying businesses' location, if you could add a number of jobs or dollars of added value, seeing as how the city gets no benefit of it, there may be some local jobs from that, if you wanted to add a number of jobs. We will loan money outside the city of plane view limits, effectively using the taxpayer's sales tax to pay somebody else that they're not going to gain any benefit from, if they make four or more full-time equivalent jobs or something, I mean, whatever you wanted to do. Or a percentage of added value to the county, because some of that comes back a little.
So put a number of FTEs in there.
I just, I, my business.
That's good.
The, the time period thing you should be cautious with, because if the sales tax funds the LBA forty, and there's no LBA forty, your sales tax is there for nothing again. So they're kind of linked together, even though they're not dependent on each other, they're very linked. So if your LBA forty is longer, or your sales tax gets canceled, then you have no money.
So you're saying.
You have no money for your, I'd keep them the same. I don't know why you would do anything, I mean, you might, you might accidentally create a sunset on your sales tax that you don't intend, if your LBA forty cancels and doesn't get repassed, you have no way of spending that sales tax money you're raising again now.
And.
Or not the levity, anyway.
Is there a possibility, Bruce, I mean, as you read through that, I mean, you go through the legal language saying something that they can be linked to each other? So we have our language saying the sunset of the one-third, it has to be revisited, can you link it?
Sales tax is totally independent. That was established by a vote as a sales tax for economic development.
Can you.
We're talking about in here, assigning that sales tax to the LBA forty fund. If they pass this, if this dissolved, the sales tax would still be there. It wasn't passed.
Right.
On LBA forty.
But the point is, you couldn't do anything with it, other than pay a staff member.
It's there for economic development, it's mandated by the city.
Gotcha.
And advertising and tourism, and whatever you choose to do internally. You can't spend city money in a general sense to benefit private businesses. You can't spend city money to buy and sell real estate without jumping through the real estate. This would let you do that. This would let you spend city money, that designated money, to benefit a private business.
I understand, no, that's actually, that's a good point, because we, the, the sales tax, Bruce said it's already in existence, it can still be used. It's just it's so restricted based upon language, what economic development uses it can be for. Just can't buy real estate, can't use it for private business.
That's why I wonder if you don't want to consider the possibility of just broadening this to use those funds for a few of the things you would otherwise like to use them for. If you make it too complex, the inventory burden is going to be substantial.
I don't disagree.
If you cannot do that, and I wonder how the voters would react, just looking at that, not understanding, and just voting no.
Could be. I don't disagree. Your permissions are in there, like I said, the eligible uses, now you can pare down and see if it is a revolving loan fund. Maybe you don't want a revolving loan fund for business. Now, the strategic plan that Roger and I, and you presented earlier, that it's in there, to have a revolving loan fund of some sort. You know, and when the money gets freed up with the red light program, that was the money where we talked about that going into, beginning with. That would be non-source, I mean, non.
I mean, I got to read it. What I've seen, I like.
The seven C, the app, the stuff required to apply, I threw a fit about that when I had to do it too, because if you're a startup, you don't have any of this stuff, and you're obviously not, you're not required to turn it in if you don't have it. But it also shows, I mean, a business plan, a real business plan, shows a lot of dedication for people. So if they're required to at least do a business plan, you know they at least have done some research and know what's going on. If their business plan is handwritten on three sheets of notebook paper, you're probably not going to want to give them that money, you know? So I, those things are a pain in the butt, but they're really not that, you know, whatever. I think it shows seriousness of your applicant, if you wanted to do it that way. The only other thing I was going to suggest was, on the real estate purchasing one, which is the part I didn't like originally, I'd like to see you put in something, I had a farmer come in the other day and say, in the forties, the banks owed all the farm ground because everybody went broke, and the legislature passed a law that said they had to unload it all by a certain day. And they got it back into the hands of the people and effectively making money again, because when it's in the city's hands, it makes no money. It does nothing for anybody. It doesn't get any taxes, there's nothing useful that's really happening with it. Maybe you could put a, how fast the city has, if the city buys property, how much they can buy, and how fast they have to unload it. So that they don't sit on the three blocks of downtown property for eternity. I mean, if the, if the city is going to go buy it, there's probably nobody else that wants it anyway. But rather than have it continually sit in the city's control.
Hopefully the city won't buy property that other people want, so we can take control and flip it, because if nobody else wants.
Well, the idea is to flip it, but if you can do it, if you could put something in there about how fast you have to do that.
I mean, we've got some buildings, I think, Main Street that people sit on.
Well, no, I'm talking specifically about the lots of question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, that's something that, if it takes us two years, or it takes us five years to find the right fit, I think it makes sense to wait to find that right fit, because there's no other parcels like that around. It's your last, besides the old trailer court. Those are the last two.
Not a part, I don't think.
Nothing, from the island? Oh, you were going about something.
Previously.
I don't.
The only two that, the only two that are currently in all this.
You've got a second quarter, so you would have to warn that lot that he's coming by it now.
Well, there's some people may offer. It depends on what you want there. Do you want a junk card?
Well, that's, they're going to have to have certain EPA and things to do that, they're not going to slap a junk card there.
I would.
Legally, you can't just put that in the middle of the city.
I would encourage you, just a last thought, is you've got the one, if you, and I've given this to you in the packet before, the, to, you've got the one from Roger, from what you reported, but this is the strategic, the economic development strategic plan.
Didn't you know you have?
Yeah, you can just have this one if you want.
Excellent.
But it has more or less very loose.
Be nice just to put that in everybody's packet or in for next Tuesday, just to get them out, make sure everybody gets a copy.
You already have your packet?
Well, I don't.
Let's give it to Bruce.
I'll have it too. I'll give it to you.
Probably put them in our code books that are up by the trophies.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, on next week's agenda, we'll just want to pull stuff, complete that order, and before the season starts.
Is it stuff that's already been decided upon, so we just need to get it ordered?
Paying the center.
So you still want an agenda item, Joe, or just get it ordered?
Well, just keep it off the agenda, because I already have mine.
Well, at least update.
Discussion.
Here, I have a straight report, update us on it. Need action on it.
We did action.
How much money is, what is money coming out of the economic fund right now? Sales tax. Are we paying Roger out of that?
No.
Yeah, it is, that is, that is an acceptable use of that.
No, she's saying, are we using it now?
Are we using it to pay Roger now?
No.
Yeah.
No.
No.
That's set up the people. No, because that's a separate bank account, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, the mail, you bow.
The only.
Now, you all listen to, listen to the reason, so.
No.
It will, it will come out of there on a yearly, on an annual, at the end of the year. We'll determine how much, as far as payroll, and then that'll reimburse, the general, right now it's coming out of general.
Because it has to.
It has to because of payroll. So, but you do have me taking out reimbursements for meals, and you have reimbursements.
Right, but his actual wage was part of the budget, was part of the annual budget that we passed. It wasn't part of the LBA forty.
No.
No, I don't remember if we, I kind of remember trying to keep it out of there, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't have to get touched, so it could build up something.
Yeah, and it can stay coming out of general, as we choose. It's not that much. There's some months he puts in ten hours, fifteen hours.
Maybe you work more.
So it's really not much.
He better be getting a.
I'm willing to go there and review this LBA forty plan with him, Grant, Bruce.
Bruce? Nope. Too long of a plane flight, I'm not going.
Going to Japan.
Yeah.
That's why he won't.
Twice is too long, I don't want to do it again.
All right. I'll go if you won't go then.
Fair.
On the agenda items for Tuesday night, have we got something on there about that letter we got from the chamber of commons?
He's got it.
On the agenda.
No, but we should.
He's got it answered in his report.
Yeah, it's in the report, yeah, it was.
We're not, we're not.
It is what it was, it was what it is, and then it was.
Can we go on what we have here?
Yep.
We got two more.
But it's handled.
Discussion on action on hours and rate of pay for internship.
Okay.
That's why I opened it.
Well, college kid, I'd like him to, see, that's where we're going to have to work out, Mike. You're not going to have him here with you. Now, do we think we can do a monthly thing? Because I would think it'd be nice when they come in, give you an hour of report, with our report, and then.
Well, it depends who we hire.
Right. So we got to have the pay set in. We got to figure out how we're going to structure this pay. You got a college kid, hour and a half away, leaving, open room.
I don't, what, why are we trying to decide to pay before we've had any interviews or anything? I mean, because I would think a lot of it depends on the candidate.
Right.
If somebody comes in with Mike's experience, I'm willing to give him a little bit more than I'm willing to give the signature student.
That's fair, but we should set up a range, because people are going to want to know.
No, salary coming through with experience, that's, every job out there right now says that.
I'm just listening. I mean, he's, we've only had still the one candidate, and I don't know if that was predetermined, if Dr. Blank and I had something to do with that, and he's kind of directed this, but I haven't had any other hits, and I'm.
But I'd much rather have somebody that's up in this area than somebody that's from Omaha, the mayor, and then I show up once a month.
They.
That has to be mandatory, Mike. You have to show up. If you don't come to the city meeting, that's like tipping a day or.
They actually start school on the.
From Omaha, to understand the economic impact of what goes on in small towns.
But a, a poly-somager, as hypothetically, going to a lame state has a better grasp of small town, you're getting a lot more small-town kids in there, people, grownups, whatever.
Not if they're back in Omaha.
Right, but that will be part of the interview process. I mean, we're, sorry, this is an internship they're going to get hours for, so they might be doing this doing school years, they might, that'd be far away.
School starts on Monday, and I'll be a follow-up with, not only the Wildcat, that program, but also try, I'm actually going to try to get a hold of Joe, too, so.
We're right ahead. Well, we have to have something, we can't just.
You could put hourly wage plus mileage or something, hourly wage plus a dollar for getting there.
Right, right.
Well, I had a guy come from Norfolk for me, and I gave him mileage back and forth, but I gave him like seven fifty, plus his mileage.
Right.
So it added up for him.
Fifty percent?
Yeah, or whatever.
Or a quarter.
Private business, I do what I want.
Oh, these are.
They're really crummy cars.
Listening, I think the suggestion on whatever, it'd be nice to kind of get a feel for the range that you're thinking. Is this a eight to ten? I mean, in your mind, is this intern, college kid?
Eight to twelve hours a week.
I mean, not hours, but not hours.
And probably eight to ten, as far as wages.
Uh, because he's going to need, let's say, I bet they'd offer three hours for internship, so three hours a week would be like normal, so maybe so many a month, fifteen hours a month or something. But if we're paying them, he's going to, it's compensated.
Would that be enough to fill out all the paperwork? Fifteen hours a month?
I mean, but does that, does that sound like it's even going to get anything done, because I already got Roger, I don't, I, Roger, I would like him to have more hours, but he has to use them first.
I would, I would like to probably see, depending on, the, the two projects that I have in mind, and one is a CDVG looking at, and the other one would be doing, that's a lot of research to get that put together, and the other one would be the civic, what the hell do you call that place in Omaha? Century Link, there's a special grant program designed for that, you know, for the library, but that's going to take some research and take some paperwork to do, so.
What do you think, ten hours a week? Max?
Ten, ten max.
Like, send it as a max, that this is, but they have to show results, we have to make sure they're using.
Ten hours a week.
Well, maximum is what we will pay them.
To be honest, five to ten hours a week.
I mean, they get a lot.
Is there good three-hour credit?
Because you're probably going to shovel some stuff towards them too, I don't see why.
The CDVG, though, I don't think we should be using the intern on that, that should be lead in Randy's gig. Because they're the ones that are going to profit from that more than anyone.
Yeah, but they won't do those, CDVGs.
He's talking about the dump, right?
Well, not only that, but anything that has to do with the library.
Housing, right?
No. The CDVG would be for anything but the housing, and actually, lead Randy, the only thing they know how to do.
Right, right, that's, I'm sorry, that's what I thought you were talking about, with the CDVG.
Probably one of the other programs, from a civic side.
Well, then just make sure it's a vitally crucial one, then.
No, and he's not going to write it. I look for this he or she, if he's politically correct, that might be looking at, I know you just don't want to put a sheet with me, Randy.
No. I thoroughly believe that Lori would handle you if you were getting inappropriate with the young lady in the office.
She does now.
Anyways.
Yeah, okay, eight to ten, eight to twelve hours, or eight to ten dollars per hour.
Five to ten hours a week.
Maximum, yeah.
With experience, Wade, with experience.
Commensurate on.
Experience, wage negotiable, I have wage negotiable, we get it.
Okay.
That's always, that's always a vague description. I was like, wage negotiable.
You keep using that word, I don't think it means what you think it means.
I get that reference.
What was it that, now, I want to take this with you.
Okay.
Is that all we need to know about the intern?
Ross, you got anything you want to add? Moving forward.
All right, possible executive session on legal matters, for electrical building. I guess the first question is, can we even do that in the executive session?
Well, I brought everybody a fresh copy, if you'd like to have one of the patches on the executive session. See on eighty-four, fourteen, ten, it starts at the bottom of that page. That's the first paragraph at the top of the next page is the rule you have to deal with. Short one?
I'm, I'm okay, I'm.
Affirmative vote, if clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest or prevention of needless injury to reputation of an individual, and the individual has not requested a public meeting. The subject matter and the reason necessitating the closed session shall be identified in a motion to close. And then there's a list of examples.
I think it would fit straight under the first one, a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining.
Pending litigation.
One other thing I'd point out to you, I mean, you've got to, if you do it, look down at number two. This is detailed, that you don't see every time you pay this meeting lot out there, but you don't go read it. The vote of each member, the vote should be taken in open session, the vote of each member should be recorded, and the providing officer shall immediately prior to the closed session restate on the record the limitation of the subject matter of the closed session. That's your procedure getting in, and then if you note number three, any member of the public body can challenge that it's not necessary, and the challenge is overruled only by a majority vote of the members of the public body, three of four of the council. So, protection of the public interest or protection of injury to reputation of an individual. I guess I know vaguely what we're talking about, and I don't know how either of those things is around. You've got some conflict of interest issues that are awkward, but protection. You've got some conflict of interest issues that are awkward, but protection of the public interest or protection of reputation of an individual, and you get either of those points, somebody's gotta make a motion, I just get the top.
Can we state what the, I mean, if, if we're interested in Wade, is, what is the reason?
Yeah, I think it says it right there.
Where?
On the agenda.
Is there some litigation coming forward with improperly billing for liquidity?
There certainly could be.
Well, so leave a threat of litigation.
I'll make a motion to give another executive session.
And the reasons for going into executive session, you're saying is?
What reason, just a threat of litigation and strategy sessions with respect to collective bargaining?
I don't think that collective bargaining would be incorrect, the threat of litigation, I would second.
Either way.
What do you want to say, Joe?
The threat of lit, of litigation.
Well, we've got a motion.
I'll second that.
What is it? What is it for?
It's.
I don't have a thing.
What?
I don't have a agenda thing.
The next session is pertaining to an electrical billing, we're going to close session due to the threat of, the threat of litigation.
Well, we've got a motion made and seconded. And no other discussion? Judy?
I don't think I have enough information to vote, I would have seen.
Now, Joe?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Grant?
Okay, who do you want here, how about two girls?
I think the tables.
Yeah, I don't think we need anybody.
You want us all to go?
Yeah, I think it's fine, sir, that's fine.
You want to stay?
I don't want. End it all. You thought you could share that with Judy, so she's out there.
I have a.